I would like to bow out from the woods and stand and join us in the recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we give our own which we trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The rahim is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Shelby City Councilman is called to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see it, please. We'll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
President.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Here.
I would now dispense with the reading of the journal from the March 15, 2021 meeting.
So do you.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense with the reading of the journal from March 15, 2021. Discussion. We'll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
That motion passes. Thank you. Now, for the time of the public comment, at this point, public comment is received by email or mail or getting a letter through the mail. Has anyone received any public comments to be shared during public comment time this evening? Mr. Gates.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I've received a phone call and a follow-up email from a constituent on Sixth Street. His concern is with the trash containers, with the residential trash containers. We do have the ordinance which the clerk made available, which talks about that people may not, they have to remove them from the public right of way after they've been picked up, and then they can't put trash out in the curb sooner than 24 hours ahead of their scheduled trash pickup. The concern that this constituent has is a situation across the street, and it's not that the residents there are leaving their containers at the curbside, because we do have an ordinance there, but that they are being pulled back and are still in full view, in this case of his house. I'll pass around a picture here where it's a three-unit apartment building across the street from his home, and two of those residents have their trash containers in front of the house, in front of the apartment. One is quite overflowing. So his suggestion, in so many words, is that we should require that those trash containers at least be pulled back beyond the plane of the front of the house, so they're not so blatantly, not so blatantly in full view of the neighborhood. So I told that gentleman I would share that concern with people. I did drive up and see the situation, and, you know, this picture was taken yesterday, but I had driven up a week or so ago anyways, and what he had described to me on the phone indeed is the situation there. So I have said, I have done what I said I would do. I would present it during a public comment. Where this goes from here, one might well expect some legislation for the comment. I don't know if any of my other colleagues have, you know, have, you know, got reports of similar situations, but, you know, as we have an ongoing, you know, fight against life, as it were, despite our best efforts, you know, it's like we're not making any progress, I'm sorry to say. And again, despite our best efforts, everyone's best efforts, it just doesn't seem to be going to be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Mr. Robb.
Actually, Saint Gentleman, I had a conversation with him face to face and told him if you didn't bring that to console, I certainly would, and report him back to you, so. Thank you. I'm well aware of that issue there.
Very good. Thank you. Any further public comment? If not, we'll move forward to reports from standing and special committees. Community and Economic Development Committee met. Housewoman McGlocklin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the Economic Development Committee met today, 3:30. First, I would like to pass along to you is Amanda Miller, representing Marvin Memorial Library, would like to need to point out a few things happening at Marvin Memorial Library this month. To include what we normally see with the April calendar, they've started adding a teen activities calendar as well as separating some of the adult programs as well. We want to specifically point out a few things that are happening this month. So tomorrow at 6 o'clock, Magician Michael Mage at Blackford Commons. On the 10th at 9:30, genealogy class online, topic, "Where Did My Ancestors Live?" On the 13th at 6 o'clock, the Book Vault at The Vault. And on the 28th at 6 o'clock, artsy April performance on WMML and on Zoom. Next item I'd like to pass along, Stacy Zier, representing the Community and Housing Improvement Program, gave the following updates. The 2018 grant is finishing up and needs audited. The 2020 application intake process is ongoing with eight applications so far, five recabs and three repairs. Next, Jessica Grubin, our Economic Development Liaison, she reports the CIC now owns the property of 59 West Main Street, and so they'll be focusing on the roof and deteriorated bricks. Next, she reported that the Goodyear Cooper Tire Building, north of Pliny Current Technology Center at the depot, is available for rent or lease. This facility is 840,000 square foot with 10 bays. And then she also noted that the Shoemaker Properties behind, in near Arby's, is showing interest in developing their 45 acres. They're working with Jobs Ohio Insight Consulting. That's all I have for today, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGlocklin. Are there any comments or questions for him in regard to his report? We'll move forward then to Public Works and General Operations Committee. Councilman Robb.
You can have that. I have another call. Thank you. Yeah, we're at on the 23rd of March, covered quite a few topics. You're going to see an ordinance and a resolution that are, that go together on tonight's agenda and those concerned, intrusions into the right of way, if you will, that need to be cleaned up to take care of the upcoming project downtown. Also, on the agenda tonight is a resolution for bids for the City Hall roof. There are some bid specs in your council packet. I'm sure you're seeing those. Mr. Geis advises he's, was scheduling a meeting with the contractor that finalized the demolition at the, at the drive-through. You know, if that's taken place yet, Mr. Geis can advise further. Some ongoing, it's kind of property maintenance issues, two of which were in the first ward. Mr. Geis has sent letters out on those. Also, sent request for qualification statements for the Blackford Commons project. If you're not aware of what those are, it's basically just listed questions that the contractor entered to make sure he qualified to do the project. There's a couple of new construction projects on Technology Parkway, they're private residences, and Mr. Geis, if I'm remembering correctly, said that those residents will have sidewalks in that area, part of which the area had been waived, but those residents will have those. And meeting the same morning of the CRHHC, went over a list of houses in that program, properties in that program, and all those passed. And finally, the taxi has a new driver, and he's currently working full-time, or was at the time, or a full-time driver, been off ill, so somebody was still in that position. That's all I have.
Mr. Robb? And that indeed is the case. He still is working full-time in that position. Are there any other comments or questions for Mr. Robb in regard to his report? If not, we'll move forward then to reports of city officials, my mayor's reports. In lieu of the proclamations and confirmations that were on the agenda this evening, I will confine my report to our health department. The Shelby City Health Department is reporting COVID-19 activity from April the 3rd, April the 5th, with a total of three new cases in that timeframe. Those are from the general population, as well as two recovered, resolved cases from the general population. The department has documented a total of 826 individuals who have tested positive for COVID-19 since the outbreak began in March 2020. Of that cumulative number, 777 individuals have attained recovered, resolved status. There have been 35 COVID-19 deaths documented from within our jurisdiction, nine from general population, and 26 from long-term care facilities. The department is currently monitoring a total of 14 active cases from the general population, with zero individuals hospitalized. The Shelby City Health Department has administered 1,939 first doses of vaccine since, that's since mid-January. Four clinics dedicated to second doses will take place this month. We will not be scheduling any new first-dose COVID-19 vaccine clinics due to the lack of demand. We endeavored to put on an evening, late afternoon evening clinic a week ago, and advertised quite heavily. I called businesses, hoping to get some folks on their way home from work to, you know, schedule and stop in, and through all that activity on Facebook and Twitter, there were two individuals interested. So we have decided to put things on pause as far as our first doses go. We will continue with four second-dose clinics that had been scheduled for this month in April. So all the folks that have scheduled for their second dose in the month of April, those are still going on, we still fulfill that second dose as planned, so make that clear to everyone. Thursday, at Parkland's Corner, there'll be a mass vaccination clinic, I believe from 9:00 to 4:00, if I remember correctly. So we encourage anyone who is interested in getting their first dose of vaccine to make arrangements for that clinic. Are there any questions in that regard? Mr. Robb?
Do we have any data, any information on, I see that there are now drug stores that are operating those, and also they have a vaccination clinic through this pool. Do we have any information on those?
We don't have any numbers. We just had a number of citizens that called and said, after they made a phone call to us, they said, hey, I called the drugstore or someone else, another provider, I was able to get in there sooner. So just by anecdotal evidence, we found that people are using, like, the health and wellness clinic, or a drug store, pharmacy, hospitals, so, and I'm sure that's where some of, some of our citizens have found their vaccinations, but we don't have any figures on that as of yet. I think the higher department health probably will put those out sometime here this summer to see who got their shots where. Is that part of what your question was about? Was that part of what you were asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have any hard figures, but we just, we know what's happening.
But it's a little hard to track if you don't get the data.
Right. We don't have the data. We, but I say, we just hear that, hey, I'm going over here to such and such a pharmacy, I'm getting my shot. A number of folks have opted to wait for the Johnson &amp; Johnson as well, which, you know, the Modern or Pfizer, someone was saying, well, I'm just, I'll just find a place that's giving the Johnson &amp; Johnson. They wanted to be like one and done, so. But if, if, if we see where the demand may, once again, accelerate, you know, at one time, we had a list of over 800 people on a waiting list, and, you know, we, again, with other providers, but we really made a way through that list quite rapidly, and so we're very pleased with our health department at that point. But again, we're just, we were just trying to, to continue with that, that same rate, and it just did not happen.
Well, I just, I just find it a little unusual that as important as some people think it is to be vaccinated, that those numbers aren't included in, in the numbers, you know, in, in the number of cases that have been, and I would think that would be important to know.
That may be on the database somewhere. We just have not received it in our health department, that's what it does. Okay. All righty. When will we, if you wouldn't mind, we'll do the confirmations and then the, the proclamations, or you want to do it in reverse, or it doesn't matter to me? Miss Webb, you got a little bit earlier. Let me look at my proclamation to, for the library, and also for Child Abuse Prevention This is a proclamation of National Library Week 2021. Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities, and whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of the building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources, and whereas for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve, and ensure equality of access for all, and whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs, and whereas in times of crisis, crises, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually, and whereas to adapt to their changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons, and whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions that exist as accessible and inclusive places, fostering a sense of belonging for all the members of the community which they serve, and whereas librarians, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. And now, therefore, I, Stephen L. Shag, Mayor of the City of Shelby, do hereby proclaim April 4th through the 10th, 2021, as National Library Week. During this time, I encourage all residents to visit their local library in person, at curbside, or online to access resources and services. Because of you, libraries transform lives and communities. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Shelby, Ohio, to be affixed this fifth day of April in the year of our Lord, 2021. Ms. Webb is here, Ms. Kathy Webb, and I'll get this, by Mr. Crum, he'll take that from the journey to do it, please. And Ms. Webb, if you would care to say a few words in accepting this, we're very pleased to recognize and observe and promote National Library Week this week.
Thank you, Mayor Shag. I certainly appreciate the recognition, and I'm so glad we can come this year again together and have this time of recognition. We all know it's been a year. Our doors have been open for 10 months. We go about doing the things that we normally do, and yet it also has been a year of kind of laying low and doing what needs to be done. We have, for example, passed out tax forms every year, as long as I can remember. This is a year when we can pass out vaccination forms, when we can pass out free COVID-19 tests. These are free for the test, free for the telemed, free for the result. Pick it up, use it. It's amazing what we can do. I was thinking of these beautiful daffodils recently, looking about and realizing that we've, we've had that time of laying low like the perennial bulbs do, and spring is coming. We too are going to bloom. It has come for time for more small group programming. We have summer programs for children and teens planned outdoor in the pavilion. We have programs planned for, by Fort Commons, where we can be outside. We haven't gone away. We're not dead. We're just blooming again. So, thank you for this time today.
Thank you, Kathy. And I think that's a beautiful metaphor, and it is, it is good to see the library blossoming again this spring. Any other comments from council members? Thank you for being here to receive it. Thank you for all your work, Kathy. Ever since you've been here in Shelby, I've just seen, to me, just incremental adjustments, and then may timely adjustments, and I know it takes our team, but we thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much.
Another proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month. This is a yearly event for us, and I'd like to deliver a proclamation in this regard. Whereas children in Richmond County are our most valuable resource, and they need our support to thrive and grow into healthy, productive adults, and whereas during National Child Abuse Prevention Month, we renew our unwavering commitment to protecting our children and responding to child abuse, promoting healthy families, and building a brighter future for all, and whereas every child deserves a nurturing family in a safe environment, free from fear, abuse, and neglect, and whereas parents, guardians, relatives, and neighbors all share a responsibility to prevent these devastating crimes, and our local government plays a critical role as well, and whereas since 1883, the agency has been committed to helping future generations succeed, and is focused on ensuring the safety and well-being of all families, and is partnering with local, state, and federal agencies to improve the lives of children and their families, and whereas I today call upon all Shelby residents to join the effort to keep children safe and families strong. Now, therefore, I, Stephen L. Shag, Mayor of the City of Shelby, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to join Richmond County Children's Services and its partners as they support each family's efforts to keep themselves and their children safe, healthy, and in a nurturing environment. And furthermore, I call upon all residents to observe this month with programs and activities that help prevent child abuse and provide for children's physical, emotional, and developmental needs. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Shelby, Ohio, to be affixed this fifth day of April in the year of our Lord, 2021. And usually, Bridget is with us every year to receive this, but of course, in some of the environments that we're in, we felt best to do this virtually, but we would encourage all that are in hearing range to do then what they can to promote child abuse prevention in our city and all through Richmond County. That is my report. Before we get to confirmations or any questions or comments for me in regard to my report, before we get to the confirmations, Mr. Gates.
Apparently, Daily Globe had an extensive article last week regarding Skiles Field and its future, and you were quoting extensively of that. And I think the comments you made were spot on. The, our, our colleagues and friends at the Board of Education need to understand very clearly that they may not unilaterally give us that real estate. As we know here, any action involving real estate involves the action of city council. Whether you buy it, whether you can sell it, whether it's grant annization, whether it's request annization, the lease, whatever. So, I, I, I want to be careful not to presuppose what's going through their minds, but let me just be blunt. If they think they can unload that property on the City of Shelby, they're mistaken. Our resources are finite, just as their resources are finite, and the resources of the park board are even more finite. I, I don't know how, with the, with the millions that we have for the park board, and the few number of employees they have, we only have one full-time employee, the restaurant's seasonal. The gentleman here to my, to my right is simply telling us how much effort it is to mow the property, Skiles Field and the parking lot, clear down to Tucker Avenue. Now, I'm not flat out saying, no, you know, we don't, we're not interested, but it's going to be a bilateral decision regarding that property. Granted, they have to think about their taxpayers, as we have to think about our taxpayers. And, you know, at some point, you know, I'm sure we'll have those conversations, but again, it has to be a true partnership between both sides in negotiating that agreement.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for me? Or to a motion to confirm? I think you can add that, please.
Mayor, I believe the council confirmed the appointment of Brad Ubank to the Civil Service Commission to fill an expired term, to confirm the appointment of John Eschler to the Community Improvement Corporation, to confirm the appointment of Nathan Martin to the Community Improvement Corporation, to confirm the appointment of Stacy Hyatt to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council, and finally, to confirm the appointment of Marion Hock to the Shaefer Commission.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Ms. McGlocklin to confirm the appointments of those so red, Mr. Brad Eubank, John Ensmen, Nathan Martin, Stacy Hyatt, and Marion Hock to the various corporation or commissions. Are there any questions in regard to that motion? Mr. Martin.
I just wanted to state that, you know, a thanks for me, for everyone going here, but specifically, Marion Hock, and her many years of service to the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
That motion to confirm with various citizens has, thank you. If there are other comments or questions, we'll move forward then to report from our Director of Finance, Mr. Crum.
Thank you, sir. I guess our lead off is tax season. So individual returns typically are due April 15th of every year. Several weeks ago, the federal government extended their tax deadline to May 17th, and shortly thereafter, Ohio and all of the municipalities extended their tax deadlines to May 17th. So we'll follow suit with that. So individuals need to either file their returns or file an extension with us by May 17th for the 2020 year, as well as make any tax payments for the 2020 year by that point to avoid the interesting penalties. Tristan penalties. As far as I know right now, first quarter estimates for federal Ohio and us are still due April 15th. So, for those folks who filed, send in a check quarterly for their taxes because they're self-employed or own rental properties or something, those should still be done by April 15th. So, that is the one big change. I did give you guys a sheet that lists our income tax receipts through the end of March. The left side is 2020, the right side has 2021. I was actually kind of surprised, particularly with the net profit tax revenue, which is the business tax returns, where we've had $69,000 in receipts so far this year compared to over $44,000 last year. I was really surprised that the business income so far, what we've received so far is a lot. I'm also very happy to see that withholding income for this year, which is current, is almost $756,000 compared to $707,000 last year. You know, I know that, that there was sort of a shortage in March last year because, I don't know, maybe the last 10 days or so, a lot of people ended up being laid off. But, you know, for first quarter, I'm really happy with that. Individual returns, obviously they are down. It's 187,000 in receipts so far this year compared to 207,000 last year. I'm not particularly worried about that at this point, especially as soon as people heard that, that all the tax deadlines were being extended. Well, really, as soon as they heard the IRS was extended, they just assumed the rest of the world would. And so, at this point, we've, we have received 1,282 tax returns of, normally we have about 4,000 that come in throughout the year. So, we're about 25%, 27% or so of our total. So, it doesn't surprise me that our income tax for individuals is down at this point. But I will keep monitoring it. I'll keep you guys informed as we move through things here. The only other good news I have is the State Augur has come in and they've started their fieldwork. They will be with us for probably the next two or three weeks, and then we've got to go do some more stuff at their offices and they'll be back in a month or so. I asked, I was hoping that, that they get done a little earlier this year. I think they will. They seem to have a slightly better plan than obviously last year was thrown out the window. But I wouldn't be surprised if we see that finished up maybe in early July this year. I would hope for that. So, that's the other big news from my office. You know, I know we've, we've been on, we sat through one presentation on some potential funding that is coming our way. We really don't have a whole lot of concrete information about that yet. The Montrose Group, which did the CIC's plan for downtown, they are doing a presentation on the funds from the federal government on April 27th. So, a number of us will be sitting in on that, and hopefully we'll have a little more clarification on how funds can be spent, and maybe a timeline of when we will get funds. At this point, it sounds like we'll get, I've heard 1.7, 1.8 million dollars, but I don't have the official, the official amount. And it sounds like we'll get half of that this summer and half of it next summer, and we'll be able to, we will not have to expend it all until the end of 2024. So, it's not like the one that carries that money where all of a sudden they gave it to us and like, hey, you have six weeks to spend. It's, we, and then numerous deadline changes. So, they're giving us plenty of time to work through those funds and use them as we see fit. And I will keep you up to date with that. And hopefully by Finance Committee, I'll have some, some more concrete information.
That Mr. Mayor is running for?
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I saw Mr. Gates has sent an email, and I was very happy to see it, that the Finance Committee will be taking up a lot of that. And so, you had mentioned, Mr. Crum, that you'll hope to have some kind of report by then, but the thing isn't until 27.
Correct, yes. Yeah, I will not have, have the Montrose's presentation done. I'll just have to do my own reading and bring some supporting materials to the committee at that point.
And then I assume that there's a repository of a request from different folks within the administration. As far as the spending of this money, I'm assuming that we'll be able to have start a pilot back for the Finance Committee as well.
Certainly, I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Crum. Look forward to Mr. Ister's time here this evening. Mr. Geis, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. This council member, Robb, stated the drive-through demolition bid at that meeting last Thursday, and a change order should be expected at the next meeting to finalize that project. Friday, we did receive our letters of interest from three different engineering firms for the downtown Black Forest Commons area enhancements. So, we'll be grading those. And then, believe it or not, since Ms. Greman got the grant from the state for the capital budget, it'll run through the city portion of it, and the park boards are in charge of that area. So, we're going to have quite the interesting contract documents for that, but we'll work through that process. All right, we received our bids opening for the 2021 paving program. Concozy Construction was a little bidder at $348,726.53. Our estimate was $467,680. So, we did have, council did approve an Alden alternate road, High School Avenue. That totaled $67,565.14. So, our total project will be with the alternate road, $416,291.67, which is still $51,388.33 under the original estimate. So, we did get some very good prices, and I think it's, has to do a lot of getting it out early. So, I think, thank council for that. And so, that gives us some wiggle room to try to look at other different roads and use our other avenues of getting that done. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Mr. Gates?
An additional street could be a change order. Perhaps.
Right. So, we'll need to look at that. In that whole project area, one thing that we did look at was Fish Avenue. And that would complete the whole area in there. We took it out because it's such a narrow road and a small road, and it seemed better fit for one of our local contractors, but come to find out that his equipment can't do it in two passes or one pass or whatever. So, that very well may be a good fit to do that change order and so forth. We've got to be careful on doing too much of a change order, adding additional roads, because that can get sometimes into the construction laws and so forth of adding too much to an existing project that wasn't part of the bid. So, we need to monitor that also. But we could have other local contractors that we can, you know, do a different road that way. So...
Mr. Gates?
It's been some time since I've been down Fish Avenue, but I don't believe it has curb and gutters.
Mr. Gates?
It does not.
Mayor, it leads me to wonder what, what's there underneath that?
Like a base?
Yeah. If, if there was not a curb and gutter put in, it makes me think that there's not much of a street there to begin with.
We're going to do some course samples to check that out. We did add in some other roads in the area on this project too. So, we, that way we knew what was there.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Geis. Any other comments or questions? All right. If not, we'll move forward then to new business. Any new business we have brought before council this evening? Mr. Robb?
Thank you. An issue came to me through social media concerning, I guess, what concerned the parks. One of the coaches for a softball team was trying to find a place to have a practice for his team and was pretty, pretty upset that, you know, he approached a private entity here in town that has a couple of fields and thought the price for having a one-hour practice a week of $500 was a little much, but yet couldn't find a public home park to hold the practice. And what, what came up eventually was a discussion about Bryant Field, which is a city park that I understand is leased to the Little League, and the public is locked out of that field all year. The Little League uses that for about, about three months out of the year. Now, granted, they do maintain the grass inside that field. They maintain the field itself while it's in use, but the years of the field, approximately three months, and the other nine months, it's not open to the public. I'm wondering why we're doing that, number one. I understand, you know, that's probably the responsibility of the park board, but that's just one concern that, that I have. You know, why, if they're not using it, can the public not use it? You know, it's a city, it's a piece of property that was given to the city, or granted to the city, or however we gained the possession of it. But, you know, it's still city property, and we have taxpayers here that pay taxes to maintain the parks and use the parks, and they're not permitted to do so. Another thing that came up during this discussion is, we used to have, we used to have a ball field at, at the Water Works plant out there that was used by adult church leagues and other, other leagues and, you know, just anybody wanting to go out and play softball, that a number of years ago, the fences were taken down and the ground was plowed up, and now we have community garden plots out there that over the years, people are using less and less. And it seemed like, last year I drove by, there were more weeds than there were vegetables, and that there's absolutely no place for an adult league to have a ball game if you wanted to have one. Now, it might seem a little petty to some, but, but to people that participated in those leagues, to no longer have that and have no choice but to go out of town and play, when there are also taxpayers and contribute to the Parks Department or to the city, to have to do that, to have to travel to do that, to, when you have a ball game in the afternoon, your choices go to Ontario or Mansfield or wherever, and you can't do that in town. Now, there are a number of places that have, after I had this discussion, you can drive around to some backstops at, you know, in some of the city parks, but the fields aren't maintained. There's no fences there. There's no baselines. There's just really, you know, it's just kind of not the same thing. And, but I'd like to find out, just a little bit more information on the lease that we have with, with the Little League through the Parks Department on the Bryant Field right now, and maybe work toward the future, establish a, a ball field someplace where, where adults and kids alike could get together and have a softball game or, or a baseball game and, and, you know, start leagues again in town. You know, we sit around and complain that, you know, the kids, kids don't do anything but, you know, play video games and play on their computer and sit there and play with their phones, but we're not providing them any options either. So, I think that's important that people relook into that.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Certainly will. Thank you. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I specifically charged the equipment council to provide council copies of any lease, you know, between the board, between the park board and the Shelby Little League. I would be surprised if it's a lease in, in that legal sense of the word, because I don't recall a lease, again, ever coming before this body for its approval. Now, there may be some sort of gentleman's agreement between those two, between the park board and Little League, but I think the, the point that, that Councilman Robb raises is a good one. You know, is, is their right to that field exclusive? You know, you know, they use it for three months? What about the nine months? You know, does it remain patloft? I, you know, I, but I'd like to see whatever there is, we can review it and, and go from there.
Thank you. Any other new business? Well, looking forward to unfinished business, the future use of the Main Street Fire Station, nothing new to report there, right, Chief? Okay. Exterior property maintenance, 59 West Main Street, of course, we've heard that that is in control of the CIC now. And they, they recognize, yes, Mr.?
We're just going to say, since we reported on this, is it a possibility we can take the sauce into this under new ownership, and they are aware of what they need to do to bring that up to speed?
From what we heard this evening from this group, and we could actually request a report from the CIC, maybe month by month, but they're fully aware of the, the two biggest issues, as I intend to be the roof and then failing a brick on the outside. So, they are very cognizant of that. And they have much interesting, they don't think but of anyone. But if we please council, maybe once a month, we can have a report on that progress in, in regard to the exterior property there, exterior helmet. I'll do that. Any unfinished business before we get to the charter centennial timeline? All right. How about that charter centennial timeline, Mr.?
Mayor, something to report until May.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Any unfinished business at all? If not, that's legislation.
Orderance Number 9, 2021, amending Orderance Number 8, 2021, annual appropriations and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three supplications be suspended. Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts, that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three supplications be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin, yea. Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
A motion to suspend passes.
I move the ordinance to be taken on the pass. Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of Orderance Number 9, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, the fire chief is here, and he's best able to tell us about this order.
Chief Thompson?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Crum, Councilman Gates, and Roberts for sponsoring this. Engine 31, our backup pumper, we were going to have some pump packing work done on it to be replaced, and as they got into it, it led into the bearings, which led into the seals, which led into everything had to be pressed out. The pump split completely apart and make pulling the transmission apart. So, it was much worse than anticipated. We were scrambling to try to find how to get this done, since they're doing it in Shelby Fire, and it's learning parts in Shelby Fire right now. With passage of this, it's well on its way to coming back. Should be back online here this week. It's a very important truck for us. It's one we run on car wrecks, and it's our reserve pumper, our backup pumper, case 32s down or on another run. So, very important. We should be able to, it's a 1996 truck. This should buy us a few more years, whether it's, everything else underneath looks good. Replacement value on this truck, bare bones, is probably around $300,000 to $310,000 today's price. So, this buys us a little more time. So this buys us a little more time. It's, you know, doing fine. It says some pump issue. It's a 26-year-old pump. They're actually designed to drip water, keep everything lubricated. Eventually, it wears out. So this is, buys us a few more years of that truck and like I said, it's a part. So we couldn't really know how bad the problem was until they got into it and looked at it. So that's it. Let's see if you have any other questions with it.
Any other questions for Chief? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin, yea. Mr. Rob, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea. Mr. Gates, yea. Mr. Mark, yea.
Order number nine, 2021, passes.
Orders number 10, 2021, amending chapter 1,476, projections into public ways and grounds. Section 1,476.01, projections prohibited of the codified ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move first, read second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rob and a second by Mr. Roberts for the first reading of ordinance number 10, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. While doing some research on the resolution coming up for the encroachments into the railway, I did notice that when we redid our signed ordinance a few years ago, this reference was not called at that time. They're projecting signs out in, is permissible in the signed ordinance by council? And this just, if you look on section, it just puts the proper ordinance number on that sign. 1480.17, I think the existing is like .03 or something. Is all the only, .02. So that's the only change.
Okay. Any further discussion? No questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin, yea. Mr. Rob, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea. Mr. Gates, yea. Mr. Mark, yea.
Order number 10, 2021, passes as first reading.
Orders number 11, 2021, amending chapter 1,500 electricity, section 1,500.02, rates and charges for service. V1, generation charge of the codified ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move first reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Mark and a second by Mr. Roberts for the first reading of ordinance number 11, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Mark.
Mr. Hansman can speak to this briefly. Mr. Anderson. Uh, thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would lower the generation rate that is part of the rate structure next to the cost per kilowatt hour from a .0045 to .0040. This was a result of reduced costs within the generation side of the Division of Electricity. So we were able to lower the cost for that service.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, at the last council meeting, it was mentioned that this would save, I'll say, average residential customer $6 a year. At present, gas in the City of Shelby is $2.659 per gallon. That amounts, $6 per year means that people could buy an additional two and one-quarter gallons of gas a year. One thing I like to eat every now and then is the famous bowl Kentucky Fried Chicken. That's $5 plus the tax on the trade. So with my $6, and actually, in our case, we're not the average residential, my wife makes much less, but the average residential customer would be able to buy one and one-fifth famous bowls a year. At $6 a year, you can't get a Big Mac combo at McDonald's and you can't get a Baconator combo at Wendy's. Now, I'm all in favor of reducing electric rates. But we should be embarrassed by this, that this is as good as we can do. You know, that comes to five ten-thousandths of a dollar. Or five hundredths of a cent. That's the best we can do for the electric customers in this community? It's an embarrassment. Mr. Mark.
I, I'll move to disagree here. I think that we should incentivize people to look for every nickel and dime they can save the taxpayers of the city. The argument is we should wait for five to 10 years until our generation charges are such that we can support a larger increase. So suddenly we can buy an additional Big Mac that one year. I think that's silly and stupid argument. The generation charge is for a very specific purpose. And when the generation charge doesn't support what the specific purpose is, we are supposed to look at it lower. So yes, it's only a fraction of a penny here and it's going to save people $6. But $6 that we're giving to the people instead of $6 that we're saying is best suited in the electric front. Now, we've scrimped and since I've been on council and been on this committee, we've looked at every possible angle to bring down our, the cost of our service to our citizens. And this is a part of it. And we certainly shouldn't mock it. And we certainly shouldn't say, you know what, Mr. Hansman, stop looking for the pennies that you can save our customers because we think it's an embarrassment. It's grandstanding at best. And at worst, it disincentivizes the workers within our community to look for every penny and nickel and dime that they can save our citizens.
Mr. Gates.
My colleague, Mayor, would be well advised not to put words in my mouth. I never said that we should not.
I want you to address the chair, please.
I never said that we shouldn't look. I never said that Mr. Hansman should not look. I resent having words put in my mouth.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin, yea. Mr. Rob, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea. Mr. Gates, yea. Mr. Mark, yea.
Yea. Order number 11, 2021, passes as first reading.
Resolution number 10, 2021, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into a three-year contract with an option to renew for up to two years, exercised in one-year increments for tree trim.
Would we take that pass?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution number 10, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I would thank the finance director for reaching out about the insurance limits. Those have been changed on page seven of the bid package. I'm looking at page 11 of the bid package and the income tax ordinance has not yet been changed. I object, Mayor, with consent. At the top, the number 880 changed to number 881.
It's been asked by unanimous consent that on the Shelby codified ordinance on top of page 11 should read chapter 881. Are there objections to making that change? Same amount, it will be so changed.
Mayor, on page 14 of the bid package, at the top, again, that change was not made. I did bring the people's attention at the last meeting. This should give you the fiscal officer, the resolution number that is 57-00 should be changed to 10-2021. Pass and unanimous consent for that change.
On page 14, reported layout of the first paragraph where it says resolution number 57-00 should read, with unanimous consent, it will read resolution number 10, day 2021. Are there any objections to making that change? There are none? It will be so changed. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin, yea. Mr. Rob, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea. Mr. Gates, yea. Mr. Mark, yea.
Yea. Resolution number 10, 2021, passes.
Resolution number 11, 2021, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to purchase a ventract tractor with a tough-cut power attachment and the necessary accessories from May's left-wing sideline.
Will the resolution be taken on the pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Mark and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution number 11, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin, yea. Mr. Rob, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea. Mr. Gates, yea. Mr. Mark, yea.
Resolution number 11, 2021, passes.
Resolution number 12, 2021, approving the plans and specifications and authorizing the mayor as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2021 Shelby City Hall roofing project within the City of Shelby, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Will the resolution be taken on the pass?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Mark for the passage of resolution number 12, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, there's just a few things here. I see this as a prevailing wage rate, prevailing wage rate project. Plenty of dog here with some particular consequence. There's one consequence. It's packed in more detailed specs. The pages aren't numbered. It's 1.260 anti-discrimination employment paragraph. I do appreciate it's working. It's continuing there. It's item 4.6, paragraph A. I'm going to thank Mr. Geis for doing a little bit of research. The first sentence there in that paragraph doesn't make sense. It needs to be changed so that it reads, "Neither the material manufacturer nor its representatives practice engineering," period. I'll say that again. "Neither the material manufacturer nor its representatives," and that comma doesn't mean neither. "practice engineering," period. That end of that sentence, "nor," "nor," I know I would. And neither did the person that Mr. Geis consulted with. So I object to unanimous consent for that change.
Unamassed consent to change that paragraph to read, "Neither the material manufacturer nor its representative practice engineering," period without comma. That's the correction.
Yes, sir.
Are there any objections to making that correction? If not, it will be so made. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin, yea. Mr. Rob, yea. Mr. Roberts, yea. Mr. Gates, yea. Mr. Mark, yea.
Resolution number 12, 2021, passes.
Resolution number 13, 2021, adopting Richfield County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Will the resolution be taken on the pass? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution number 13, 2021. Discussion? Not Mr. Geis first, and then Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the very important multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. So why is it important? Because just for instance, the 2007 flood, if we did not have this, we were not part of this plan or adopt this plan, we would have not gotten any federal grant money at that time. And we did get substantial amount of dollars during that time. This one was kind of a rough one to do. Usually, we meet over there, but this one obviously was Zoom meetings and so forth. It was very difficult to get through their whole process, but this is the final project they presented.
Thank you. Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Geis mentioned in his memo, the plan was pushing 500 pages, you know, like he asked. And the suggestion was just include the introduction. There's no executive summary, so that's why we have so little planning. I have a concern here. I'll be the first to begin. I did not read through all 473 pages. I did read through the introduction. And Mayor, I'm, I'm, I just want to point out the numerous errors I found in these seven pages, which raises some concern for the rest of the document. You know, some of them must point it out that if Garland Gates likes to be right, of course, no one likes to be wrong. So I'd like to just give you an idea, because I do wish to make an amendment, a brief amendment, but I think a very substantive amendment to the resolution. If you look at the bottom of page two, the overview, where it outlines all the cities, villages, and townships, then you'll note that opposite Crestline and Plymouth areas are asterisks noting that they are, they are parked. They aren't the common lines. Well, the City of Galleen annexed its airport probably at least a decade ago, but it's not on the list. That's one example. You know, if we can note that Crestline and Plymouth are only partially in the county, we should do likewise with Galleen. Looking at page five, again, at the top, it says Richland County contains three cities. Well, with Galleen, that's four. If we look at page seven, the county features where it talks about transportation and lists state routes. You know, this may be picky evenish, but I'm going to say it anyways. It notes Route 30 and Route 42. Those are not state highways. Those are even sidewalks. The last paragraph, it talks about freight service, includes CSX, Norfolk Southern, and Nashmore Railway. There's also Wheeling Lake Erie that goes through Plymouth, across the northern end of the county. If we look at the next page, page eight, it's labeled major transportation routes, roads, and railways. It has on here interurban pearly lines that disappeared back in the 1930s. It shows the route that goes, if you see south of Shelby there, about a 45 degree angle, that's the old Pency Line to Toledo that started at Toledo Junction, goes through Vernon Junction onto Tyrone and so on. I never remember that railroad ever being used. I'm 65 years old. So, and then it also shows the VNO continuing south through the county is railroad. That's the bike track. So on page nine, the first paragraph, Richland County's home to three man-made lakes, two of these Clearfork reservoir and Charles Mill Lake act as reservoirs. That's not correct. Only, only Clearfork is a reservoir. It continues while the third, Placid Hill, was constructed for the purpose of flood control. Charles Mill was built for flood control too. We know it's one of the most kingdom lakes. The next paragraph in the middle, it talks about the Clear Fork and the Black Fork. These two rivers merged in the central eastern portion of the county before exiting east. That's just flat out incorrect. Anyone who has canoed out of Loudoun Dell knows that the Black Fork and the Clear Fork merge east of Mohican Park. They don't merge in Richland County. That listing there of parks and nature preserves in Richland County, about two-thirds of the way down, it notes Mansfield Memorial Park. Now, Mayor, I dare say that you have buried some of your curations. You say that Mansfield Memorial Park is a cemetery. You say that Mansfield Memorial Park is a cemetery. Now, it's secondarily maybe a park in a nature preserve because I'm sure there's plenty of squirrels and birds there. But it's a cemetery. So, and then that was just in the, in the beginning. So with that, Mayor, I wish to make amendment to the resolution. In section one, the last sentence that says actions prescribed in the federally approved multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, I wish to, I move to insert this, uh, before the period despite its errors and omissions. I so moved that amendment.
I'll second to the amended, bring it to the table.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Mark to amend section one at the very end of that sentence to, uh, remove the present period and then add the words despite its errors and omissions, period. Discussion?
Mr. I, I just have one question for, uh, the police council. Mr. Gates says with a no way affected the effectiveness of this resolution, correct? So you're, that's your knowledge?
I don't have a clue. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, we're being asked to approve. You know, we're still a doctor.
Okay.
We're not changing that.
I'll follow.
We're just.
Let's move.
Just adding a comma.
All right. I'll be up. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Mark?
Yea.
Resolution number thirteen, two thousand twenty-one, passes.
Resolution number fourteen, two thousand twenty-one. Authorizing the mayor to issue revocable permits to occupy the right of way on, in the R I C S R thirty-nine, three point three five Shelby Street, eight five.
Move the resolution to take on the pass?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Mark for the passage of resolution number fourteen, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, this is, uh, we've done this before on the Main Street Avenue project and the Smiley and the Gamble intersection. Um, just some of the awnings, different things that are in the right of way. This would allow those to stay. I don't know, maybe procedural things, since the city of Shelby does have one of those. Does, does council need to authorize someone to sign that? Or is that the mayor, then you sign it, has it aired? I don't know. On that permit, I just thought I'd bring that up, so.
Mr. Gates?
Someone inside deal, I think. You know, if someone wants to challenge it later, it's Gally later on, they can do that. Um, on, on the last one that's there for Shelby, um, if Mr. Gates can take a look at, I think his first name might be misspelled there. It has B R, I thought it was Burmice. B U R, this has B R U, misspelled, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Mark?
Yea.
Resolution number fourteen, two thousand twenty-one, passes. Any miscellaneous business that we have for council, see? Miscellaneous, Mr. Mark?
Uh, I hope everyone had a, uh, wonderful, uh, Easter holiday. Uh, celebrating our resurrection Sunday. My family is always a highlight of our year as we remember, uh, the observance of, uh, the power over death and grave that our Lord and Savior has. And so I wish everyone, uh, a happy, belated, but all normal.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
I will, you have to be absent at the next.
Thank you. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, is the council adjourned?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Mark?
Yea.
That motion passes. We are adjourned at eight fourteen. Thank you, gentlemen.